Representative from the Automated Street Enforcement Program would like to present his small project as part of it.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Dorian Bruball. I represent Opta Traffic, which is an automated enforcement company. I'm going to pass around my cards. I know you guys all got your packets, but they were sent from the corporate office. Thank you. As I up here, a little background on myself. I've been with the company since 2012. I retired from law enforcement in August of 2012 after 20 years of service. So, as I speak to you, I speak from an informed position, from a law enforcement perspective as well, on traffic enforcement, traffic safety. What my company offers is a complete turnkey solution for traffic enforcement, to be a force multiplier for police departments, or basically the newest and latest tool for law enforcement today than in the battle against traffic enforcement. We specialize in speed enforcement, and we have the most technologically advanced systems out there. I know, in the Cleveland area, people are probably, especially with Cleveland, everywhere you go up here, everyone's very familiar with Cleveland's programs. I keep hearing about that. That is not us, I gotta say that upfront, because I am not that familiar with their program, other than I know the type of systems they use. Our company specializes in above-the-road LiDAR speed enforcement, or laser. We're the only company that uses laser for speed enforcement for unmanned machines. Above-the-road, as you get into your packets, it means placing two beams on the roadway at set distances apart. Speed is measured by the time it takes an object to move a certain distance. However, we are able to place two lasers on the roadway, specific distance apart. Each laser takes 10,000 measurements a second, and each moving vehicle or object that comes through the laser path, it can measure that speed in an instant. If the speed is measured to be above whatever the municipality or police department sets to be the threshold of enforcement, then images are captured of the vehicle, and a notice is processed for approval by the police department to be mailed out to the registered vehicle. What we provide is everything from start to finish. So, everything from, as we presented the ordinance, that kind of goes along with current legislation in the Senate, to public relations, to 24 hours, seven day a week, account relations, account management support, technical support. We bring in the machines, we service them, we have the liability for them. Our technicians will move them. All our systems are also mobile, so they can be moved around. So, instead of having to inundate a community with, say, 30 or 40 cameras at their 30 or 40 trouble spots, we can accomplish the same type of enforcement with a third of those units. Since they're mobile, they can be moved on a set schedule or an unset schedule to gain the same type of driver compliance that the community or the police department will be looking for. In all these programs, what you're looking for is gaining driver compliance, driver compliance. When you gain drivers' compliance, or you slow them down, what you actually are gaining is driver attention, driver awareness. I mean, if you've driven through Cleveland, or, I mean, think of yourselves driving, it at least enters your mindset, probably. There might be a camera watching your speed, but you're not usually just watching your speed. You're watching your speed, you're looking at lights, stop signs, everything. Therefore, in our programs, what we've seen in the past is a 20 to 30 percent reduction in accidents even, in the first year, year and a half, wherever we have a program. On top of that, we are able to, in every program that we've put forward, able to gain speed compliance, and I'll say this, within the threshold of the department. So, an example there is, say you're writing tickets at 10 miles an hour and above, just as an example. Everywhere we've gone, within usually about 12 weeks, three to four months, we're able to get the percentage of drivers going above that, 2 percent or under. And that's every program we've ever put forth. The fact of the matter is, in today's society, with the growing number of vehicles, the growing number of speed, the growing number of everything, the growing number of business out there, and the lack of growing numbers in law enforcement, this is just a tool they need. I know you have five schools in Lake Valleys. To me, that's at least five schools. Most likely, it's anywhere from 10 to 15 school zones. Even just talking schools, it's almost an impossibility to cover every school zone and make sure kids are coming to school safe or walking around safe, much less any other spots, while the officers are also maybe taking calls or one of the other 50 jobs they have throughout the day. So, this is simply just a tool for them to use to manage traffic enforcement, to get people to comply with that, to make things safer. These systems are all provided to the communities at no cost. We've provided a copy of our service agreement, which we call a service agreement. There are terms in there, it says five years, so it looks like a contract, but we call it a service agreement, because there's not one, but two separate sections in the service agreement that says that the city of Lake Valleys can quit with 90 days written notice, with no penalty. The only reason there's a 90-day written notice attached to that is that's how long it takes us to get everything out of the system, move equipment out, and everything like that, when the program stops, the day we receive written notice. We've never had a client quit. We're very proud of our service. We are a customizing-type company, we're customer service-oriented, so we want the program to work for each community, and we can tailor that to each community. We have developed, built, and designed all of these things that are home office in Maryland, and everything there has been customized and developed. So, for example, as we get new technology, it's always available to the client. If the client has a certain need that we can address technologically, we will address that, i.e., we're in development on stop sign cameras, and some people want some truck cameras for go-through trucks zones. We can build these things when certain needs come up. If we can do it, we will do it at no cost to the community. We will develop the technology and institute it. From not just placing the systems, we also take care of the back office solutions. So, we do process the notices, they get uploaded in a patent-protected, secure network, so that the police department has 24/7 access from anywhere they can hit a server, any location. As long as the authorized officer is in front of the monitor, he can access the notices for approval that are in there, and approve them. From there, when we get them back, we will mail them out for the community within one day. We will also take all the phone calls, or have the phone, we do the phone center support, as well as we take all of the calls for requests of hearings, and we will do the hearing dockets and back office support there. We also produce all the financial reports for the finance office on a weekly basis, and deposit the earnings or the process notices from the week, every week, Thursday or Friday. The way we pay for our program is we retain 40 percent of collective revenue. And I say "collective," and I don't want to hurt my hat, because some other companies will retain a percentage of notices. So, if we mail out, say, 1,000 notices, you know, some companies would say, well, we retain 40 percent of what that's worth. We retain 40 percent of whatever comes in, nothing more. So, we only take 40 percent of collective revenue, that's how we pay for our program. The 60 percent is direct deposited to the municipality, and we take care of everything else.
Any questions for?
No, I'm clear. Yes? Yeah, so I hear where there was a 15 percent administration, administrative fee on top of 40.
No. Unless you're talking, if you're getting into the collections aspect sometimes in the agreement, if you go for norm payments, and collections here sometimes can be an extra fee, but it's not to the municipality, it's put off to the, to the person who does family payment. But no, we just take 40 percent of the collective revenue.
I would like to, either you or the mayor, to answer this question. Just recently, on cleveland.com, they're talking about a House bill in the Senate, and it seems like there's almost like two conflicting bills. One is explaining that the red light cameras need to have a police officer present if it passes, which is going to cost everybody a lot of money and defeat the purpose of using these. And the second one, which it might be a little bit more lenient, is saying that, you know, it still would be okay, but then any violation would have to be reviewed by a police officer before the ticket is actually mailed out. How would either one of those impact their decision that we're trying to make today?
It shouldn't. I mean, it's going to be reviewed by a police officer anyway.
Well, exactly, but then if the Senate, if the state law passes, where we need to have a police officer on site with each one of these cameras, we're defeating our purpose, aren't we, Tony?
To a point, but we can always opt out of the cameras. Yeah. Two things. Number one, we're talking about Senate Bill 342 and Senate Bill 345. 342 was presented by Senator Sykes, out of Butler County, Cincinnati area. Senate Bill 345, presented by Senator Bacon and two other co-sponsors out of Columbus area. 345, they're actually both, they read exactly the same, except for that one line, where Sykes' bill requires an officer to be present. It's in the committee. Senator Bacon came right out with his bill after Senator Sykes did. Senator Sykes, Senator Bacon's bill has been written for, since last year, quite frankly, as soon as it went from the House to the Senate, he started writing his. Senator Sykes took Senator Bacon's bill and just added that line, and that's where they're talking. But Senator Bacon's bill has the support from the FOP, the Ohio Municipal League, the Ohio Chief of Police Association, National Insurance Institute of America, all these other associations sponsor, support Senator Bacon's bill, and not having the officer present. How will that affect? That depends. The mayor's right, you can opt out at any time, so you can just quit if that were to happen. They're not going to be able to vote on it before summer session, so from what we hear, you know, and, you know, I'm not in the Senate, so I can't tell you for sure, but the way everything looks is you're looking at end of the year anyway. The Senator Bacon's bill, the, you know, the words we get from the lobbyists is the way they talk, they may just not vote on anything, and they leave it go. Because the big debate really is, do they have the right to do any of it? Because as they've even been advised, and we've seen the email from the state attorneys is technically all of it infringes on home law. But everyone is in support of 345, because it's just a regulatory bill. Everybody's in favor of that. We're very positive in thinking, if anything goes through, that will be the one to go through. Otherwise, and some of our other clients, and we've already asked some of our other clients, say, well, officers will just start getting some overtime. Because quite frankly, you know, they'll put an officer out there at overtime, but the problem with 342 is then it moves to where municipalities will just have to look at the hours that we write the most tickets, and where is it more financially feasible for us to have the officers out there? That's what happens with that bill is to, whereas not having an officer present, they can just be out there at any time, depending on what statistics are, you know, you're not having to put a body out there. The other thing with that is, the way it currently runs, it is definitely a force multiplier, so if you have to have an officer out there, that's why a lot of them talked about doing it with overtime, or, or some of them talked about auxiliary officers or whatnot, that they need to keep their certifications up. Bill 342 is very generic, and it's saying that a certified officer has to be present at the machine. That's it. They don't have to be in a uniform, they don't have to be in a marked cruiser, they could be sitting in a lawn chair, as long as there are certified officers sitting next to the machine. That's the only thing that bill accomplishes, it doesn't talk about it, and they're not able to, well, with our systems, they'd be able to review things as they were out there if they wanted to. But they don't get processed instantly. That code comes in, and then it's processed by two different people, and then it gets uploaded in the system, and then the officer looks at it.
You've gotten those tickets before, Tony?
I have. Do you have a presence in any of our neighboring municipalities?
We do. We're in Newburgh Heights now, we've been there for seven or eight months now, we're in Cuyahoga Heights, as of very recently, and Lyndale. Yes, well, see, now, wait a minute. Now, here's the thing, because we understand, I'm not, I haven't been from up this way since 1994 when I graduated Walsh, but from what I understand, I heard this from a friend when I first came here, we drive a 3, and we hit the highway in Lyndale, and he said, "Slow down, there's a guy on duty out here 24/7." And not anymore, because of the way they changed out of the state, but they had a traffic reputation. So, when they first called us, they wanted red light cameras, some other things, we actually referred to another company. And the other company wouldn't come in, because they didn't see enough revenue potential in them.
They got like two minutes, actually.
Right. So, when they called us back, and we said, "Well, you know, we don't turn anybody away." That's not our motto. If somebody asks for a program, we're willing to come out. So, we came out, and we just instituted with them very slowly, being able to give them one camera to start with, which is kind of actually what we recommend, you know, I've been asked here, "What do you recommend with your program?" Well, my competitors will come in, and they'll take apart your community, because I looked at your map, and I said, "Well, okay, we can probably put cameras about 40 locations." But, you know, you don't need that. So, well, our philosophy, the way we look at it, is number one, the police department has to get used to the whole program, because they're the ones that have to check off on the tickets. So, we always recommend to start with a road, just one road, just put a camera up on one road. So, it might be two cameras if you're looking at a four-lane road, I'll tell you that, because each camera just, since they're lane-specific with laser, they do two lanes at a time. But just start with one road. That gets the police department used to notices coming in, gets it used to the process, and the chief and the department can start kicking back more vital information of, "This is great here, we love it, and we can produce all the data for them." And, and then it's pretty much up to them, where their hot spot is, or where do they think that they need usage, and adding or subtracting cameras. Again, there's no, there's no limit to what you can use, or you have to use, so you can have one camera, and you can have 20 cameras, it's completely up to you. You can add them or subtract them as the year goes on, as you need them, it doesn't matter. Yes, sir.
Add them or subtract them? Is there a cost to the city when you add them?
Never. There's never a cost for anything I'm talking about, ever. There's no hidden fees, there's no hidden, everyone thinks, you know, where's the catch? There's no catch. There's the 40 percent revenue that we'll retain, everything else we will take care of. The only thing monetarily that will come from the municipality is you will hold your own hearing. So, the hearing officer that you hire, that's, that's on the city, that's it. Otherwise, we take care of the rest, the man-hours of the police department. And, well, before I get to anything else, but when I said the statistics, we'll be able to get to the police department. Being that our machines are laser, they track the speed of everything that goes by, and I say that for an important reason, because having one of these programs, it's important for you to be able to prove that it made people slow down, that you got some safety out of it. While in tracking all those numbers in any of your packets, it shows one of the school zones we had in the state of Ohio, we'll be able to give you an exact percentage, we'll be able to show you charts of exactly how many cars at each mile an hour went past the unit, and how fast they were going. We're not going to give you pictures of them, but we'll tell you how many objects came by and everything, so that statistically, three months in, six months in, for annual reports every year, anytime you want one, we can present graphs, and charts, and all kinds of statistics to say exactly how many cars came by, median speed, we'll give you every speed if you want, and then the percentage of reduction in speed that you've had in that location, because we took a baseline study before it started writing tickets. So, we know what the problem was before, we know what the problem is during, and we know how we've effectively handled it.
I think I saw something on the news, and maybe everybody else did, and maybe if I'm not 100 percent accurate, but there was a gentleman that actually hit one of the cameras, and it kind of fell over, and wasn't he trying to, like, put it in his truck or his car? So, the question is, liability if somebody hits one and damaged?
That happens.
I mean, that, that, you were said on us because it happened to you, I think. Was it going that cheap?
That's what you have, but no, no, none of the units are cheap. They're, they're quite expensive, but no, we have all the liability. We've had them damaged, we've had them, we've had one set on fire in Maryland, we've had one shot up in Maryland. We've had them hit, and then, it happens. We've always been able to be out within 24 hours and either replace it or fix it. Actually, the one that got shot up never stopped working, it's all metal. So, what we do do, though, is if they are damaged, or if vandalism happens, usually we let the first one go, depending on the amount of damage, we will put a surveillance camera up at the unit. It doesn't cost anything, the municipality, we're doing it to protect our property, and if it happens, we're in the video to record it, law enforcement. Now, also in your packets, you see the different, you've seen the different systems we have up there, you've seen a trailer, a small little short box, and then some little box that looks like it's on a pole, yeah. Now, the one that's on the pole and the trailer are basically the same unit. The one on the pole is our newest technology. Everything that you saw in that trailer, if you could take that trailer and shrink it down, and put it in a 32-inch television, which is the size of that box on the pole, that's what we did. That box is doing the same thing the trailer does, it still puts the laser beams down. The only difference is it runs digital video, not still, just still camera. So, on the notices, you still get, we do, we do two, we take two stills at different distances, you know, on our still cameras on the trailers, that proves movement. In the video version, you'll get 12 seconds of video, but the person getting the ticket will just see the picture of their vehicle and everything, they can log on and check that. But the other thing is, if something happens in the municipality with this unit, and we always get asked this, that, you know, what's the benefit of that beyond just the speed enforcement, is if there's an abduction, or bank robbery, or some kind of crime where the police department has a description of the vehicle, and they have a timeframe when they think it went by one of the cameras, we can still go back into that digital video and pull that segment of time and send it to the police department for criminal analyzing. And that's at no cost, we don't charge for that, it's just a capability of the camera. Any capability of the camera is of free, completely free use for the community.
And we can also make a decision to flip the range?
Which, you make a decision on everything.
The speed range?
You guys decide on the fines, you decide on the speed range, you decide on the placement, you decide when they're moved. We're in control of nothing. What we're offering is the equipment and the back office solutions. We're offering a service, but we're not in charge or control of anything, the municipality is. It doesn't take even, I'm sorry, it doesn't even take the latitude out of the police department, because some people say, "Well, if I get stopped by an officer, A, you have your chance of talking, I have the ticket," or whatnot. Well, the police department still has full autonomy here. They accept or reject, not just at the instant when they're sent out, but there are circumstances that come up. They're even in the ordinance, if somebody's car is stolen, a plate's stolen, that's an emergency, a lot of times they're in smaller communities, you have volunteer fire department, it's not the case here, but we have, it's like the volunteer fireman comes in and says, "Hey, I was going on a call." They have access to the system, so the police department can go in there and move a notice over to the dismissal docket, if that's what they feel they need to do. They have complete power to do that. It is, they're, it is the city's program, not ours.
Okay. Any other questions?
Can you copy the service agreement?
Yes, sir.
Schedule A. Fees due to Opta Traffic, says 40 percent. Additional processing fees, talks about 15 percent.
That's talking about if you go to collections and stuff, they tax, collections tax on about 15 percent, but that goes on to the person who had the ticket. If you're aware about the language, or when you get to a contract, all the law director has to do is submit one without that line, and we'll sign whatever you want. Because again, there's two sections in there that allow you to quit at any time, we're not worried about the burbage in the contract. But that, that does speak to collections, and that 15 percent is what, we're not the one collecting, but it's what we get charged by the collection, the collections agent that we use. When we get down to that point, it would be up to the municipality how you want to collect those funds anyway, whether you want to use your own, you want to use somebody that we know, or the new method we're looking at is, the new method we're looking at is registration holds on payment for Ohio residents.
Hold up. Just to, reading this language, additional processing fees, client shell pay, Opta Traffic, where the client? Right?
It says that, but it, it's paid out of the portion. 15 percent gets added, as it comes in, we retain the 15 percent collection fees, is what's that saying? So, for example, you have a $100 ticket, okay? If it goes to collections and they add 15 percent, we're going to retain our 40 percent of the hundred, or $40, and we're going to take the 15 percent that we already tacked on to the hundred for collections. But that can change anyway, by you dictating how you do collections.
We can look at that just like you said.
Go ahead, Tony.
I just made a comment, and I'm kind of like a novice in learning this, about if there was a robbery, I could track, if there was a period of time. So, how much memory, or whatever you want to call it, does this little tape thingy have to continuously watch the traffic, and how does that get changed or renewed, or, you know what I mean?
Yeah, how much, how, how long they're taking the digital video in? It might be a week at a time.
That much? This is the real, I mean, they have that much traffic being able to play?
Well, it's digital video, yeah, that gets beamed through a satellite back down to a large server that can store stuff.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah, so, that's how it happens. And we only have it long enough so, because when you have the, we have to keep so much in there, because when you get these notices, you have 15 days. We have, it usually takes us three to five days where we process everything that comes in daily, and then the police department has so many days, you have, you know, 15, you know, plus or minus a day to get the notice mailed out. So, we have to run that video for a longer period of time, because if, you know, if there's a large volume of them, and this ticket happened here, but we're not processing until three days later, we still need it in the system. But it's not just held, it's not viewed, we get asked questions on plates, and do we sell off information? We're a private company, we have all this information. No, we don't, we're not allowed by law. We enter into, we get a slip, basically, that allows us to operate under the same conditions as law enforcement, to run BMV, information for plates for these things, through enlets, we're given that authorization for the city, for the police department, but we have to operate by the same guidelines, which means we can't save the information, we can't even take it out of the building, and once we're done with it, we have to shred it. That's the way the law says it, so we have to abide by that. We only hold it to put it with these notices. It's running the video, it's not a monitored video, you couldn't pull up and just watch the traffic cam video. It's just doing that, and we have the ability, most crimes that happen of that type of nature, they're, they're pretty upfront, time-sensitive, they happen now, the police department's made aware of them now, and they usually have a good 30 minutes, two-hour window of when they want to look at video, we are able to go back and get that clip, you know? So, they're always needing it within a timeframe that we can handle.
Okay, do we have any other questions here?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Brownlee was first.
So, what are the requirements from the police department and municipality in processing all of this?
How do you mean?
You mentioned the police department a couple of times, what will they be doing in working with processing these?
Well, the way it works is, the, the images or the, the information comes to us, goes through one processor who sets up the video or the images, runs the plate, puts it registered on our information. I can show you a picture of the notice, or what one looks like from Maryland. Then it goes to another to confirm everything, and then it gets uploaded in our biobu system. So, basically, the notice, or the infraction. The police department goes in and views to make sure that's been done correctly, that the registered owner information matches the vehicle and the video or the images, okay? And that the miles per hour that it was checked at is over the threshold prescribed by the municipality, that it's in the location, that everything was running properly, and if they agree with all that, and they think that we've done that correctly, they can hit and accept. If they don't for any way, they just hit reject. Anything they reject instantly gets dumped, dumped out of everything, it's not retained. Anything accepted is then brought back to us, or we see that they, whatever they've accepted, and then we process those for mailing out. We do that, but in the day, we mail them out.
So, is this time-sensitive, that there will need to be an officer available to approve these in a certain timeframe?
Yes, they have, I, in the ordinance, it says in the ordinance how long they have to process, and it's usually about 15 days from the time of the incident.
Okay, we're not talking about hours or one day?
No, you have 15 days to process it and mail it out. Then the person who receives the notice has 30 days, then there's a seven-day grace period to respond, and that's either to request a hearing or to pay the notice.
Okay, Mr. Adams?
Yes, just for mine only, I'm an ex-over-the-road drug driver.
Yes, they have, I, in the ordinance, it says in the ordinance how long they have to process, and it's usually about fifteen days from the time of the incident.
Okay, we're not talking about hours or one day?
No, you have fifteen days to process it and mail it out. Then the person who receives the notice has thirty days, then there's a seven-day grace period to respond, and that's either to request a hearing or to pay the notice.
Mr. Adams?
Yes, just remind all, I'm an actual over-the-road truck driver, and I'm seeing calibration. You remember when truckers used to go in, the officer wasn't qualified, he didn't calibrate his radar today?
For speed or for weight?
Speed.
Yeah, well, officers never calibrate anything, they're not scientists, they check the calibration.
Yes, years ago, I'm talking, and that's how some of the truck drivers fell off, and cars.
Yeah.
I was just wondering if this bastard.
Yeah, that means, that meets the standards, national.
It never was challenged.
The calibration is standard, you?
No, it's the same as law enforcement handheld, it's already got, it's already, it's already got traditional notes, just like radar does now. On the process sheet you're talking about, our lasers are calibrated not by us, but an independent lab, so each laser head is calibrated by an independent laboratory and a report is produced, then they go into service. When we place the machine, we do a law enforcement verification check, so we go one extra mile. We bring law enforcement out with a handheld laser and we run so many tests off the police vehicle with a calibrated unit inside to know the exact speed, and then we do so many of just the general public coming by, and our machine has to be plus or minus one mile an hour from that laser unit that law enforcement is using. We have another report generated from that, and then the machine self-checks every day, just like an officer would before they go into service with their handheld, do the calibration check of the laser. Our system does it multiple times a day itself. It checks off satellite, the satellite checks to make sure that ten thousand measurements or ten, the laser's beaming back and forth to the road ten thousand times per second. If it's off by anything, that, the time of day, the GPS location, any of the internal components aren't working, it's running hot, the machine turns itself off and sends an alert message to our technician in the field. He'll know exactly which machine it is and what the problem is, and he'll be responding here within one day to fix the problem.
Once we decide on this, pass the legislation, how soon do you begin?
The minute you pass the legislation, and we have a service contract, we start right there, and we have an implementation meeting with whoever you ask us to, usually the police chief and maybe the mayor right away, and we're operational within thirty days.
Thank you. Are there any further questions here?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
You said that you cover everything on the backside as far as paperwork, what about, how about litigation, how is that handled if there's any kind of pushback?
Well, I thought you, how we've done it before, we've actually asked to be sued for our clients before, usually that won't work, what happens, so then we ask to be allowed in as a friend of the court, they call it, so our lawyer can argue. At the very least, what we do, because, and all, actually, all the companies share the legal stuff. Redflex, ATS, ACS up here in Cleveland, legal files go back and forth amongst the companies, so it's just cost-effective business for everybody because there's precedent, especially in this state, there's precedent. The Ohio Supreme Court in two thousand eight said that home rule absolutely allowed for each municipality to decide if they wanted to use photo enforcement for traffic laws. So automated enforcement for any traffic law, the Supreme Court's already decided on. In that, we have all of, I mean, we've written briefs, we have briefs on any argument that could come up, we will produce all of those for lawyers, but we're not allowed to be your lawyer, obviously, that's when we get in conflict, so we do as much behind the scenes as we can and are asked to do.
So the litigation would actually come against the municipality, and then there's not really much you can do to represent on our behalf?
I can't really answer that, because people can sue anybody over anything, so they could sue just you, they could sue you and us, they could sue us, I mean, it can happen either way, but no matter whether it's just you, you and us, us, we will be involved. We stand with our clients, not behind them or off to the side. If you're sued, we consider we get sued, I mean, we've spent over, I don't know what the cost is in legal fees in this state, but it's in hundreds of thousands that we've spent to save our clients some money.
There was something interesting in the paperwork, so you can decide whether to find the driver or the owner, or what, maybe it wasn't in your paperwork, maybe it was in something I saw online.
You cite the registry owner. The way it works in Ohio, that's why they compare it to parking tickets a lot. It's a civil fine, all this is civil, that's what you need to know off the bat, there's no points, no BMV things, there's nothing, it's all civil. So in the civil liability, it's been found in the courts that the responsibility is on the registered owner ultimately, just like in a parking violation, they're responsible for the action of that vehicle. And I go further to say, you know, you see it in lawsuits where, say, there was a house party or something, you know, how do the parents get sued when their child loaned the car, or the kid that was drunk, whatever, well, it's because they owned the vehicle, and that, that all goes to civil law, they're criminally held responsible, civilly over here. So that's how that comes up. Now, what happens is on the back of the notice that's sent out, the person, the registered owner gets it, and if, you know, you loan your, your, your car to a friend and say, well, I wasn't driving, he was driving, you can put his information back there and say, send him the ticket, and we'll, you send that back to us and then we will reissue the notice to the person that the registered owner states was driving. Now, if they don't take responsibility, though, the catch is that ultimately, per law, the responsibility does fall back on that registered owner. Now, quite honestly, time out of ten times is kind of a moot point, because you're talking about, it wasn't me, it was my kid, it wasn't me, it was my brother or my wife, or something like that, so somebody in the household is paying a hundred dollars, and since it's a civil fine, it's not, it doesn't go on your BMV record or anything, you're simply talking about, you know, who actually writes the check for the, for the fine or whatever, it's not something that goes on certain persons' records, so.
I'm glad, okay.
Madam Chair.
Are we?
One more question.
Go ahead.
Have you had any unsuccessful relationships with municipalities or attempts at this type of traffic enforcement?
One, we've opted out of one contract. I've said, no one's ever opted out on us, no one's quit on us, we have quit on one client. Yeah. They wanted us to move a machine into a location that was technically against Maryland law. We said we didn't, you know, we pointed that out and they came back to us with the fact that they only wanted to put it there for two weeks, and no one would be the wiser. Then we said, no, we, we can't do that, it's a violation, and then they attempted to basically alter one of our machines, and then we opted out, per the contract, we opted out ourselves and removed our lawyer.
Thank you so much for coming and giving us a great explanation, we really appreciate it. We do have the ordinance on the first reading this, this evening, if Kathy perhaps you'd like to present that.
Okay, ordinance number two thousand fourteen forty-three, an ordinance amending section four one four point one nine of the codified ordinances regarding traffic law, photo monitoring devices, and to establish an automated speed enforcement program and civil penalties for automated speed violations in the city of Maple Heights and declaring an emergency.
And this is a first reading, and at this time, since there's no further business to come before counsel, the time is seven forty-five, and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for attending and for attention.